All right, what time is it? 7:31. We're calling the meeting to order at 7:31 PM. So this, what is this? This is a regularly scheduled meeting. I'm supposed to be reading this, I can't find it. This is, the proposal makes man one or something? Anyway, this is a regularly scheduled meeting for Wednesday, July 17th of the zoning board of appeals. We have two hearings tonight. The first thing we're gonna do, we're going to open calendar number 13-2024, and then immediately we continue to September 18th at the request of the applicant. This is on behalf of Patrick and Ashley McManus to allow the construction of an attic dormer. What do you, we're good with that?
Good.
Okay. Onto our public hearings, we have two tonight. First one is calendar number 14-2024, application of Nick DeMayo on behalf of DeMayo Designs for Emmanuel and Jamie Elizabeth Hannon, Hammond, Heyman, to allow the construction of a second story and cupola addition at 17 Searls Road. All right, Nick, you know the drill. Please speak clearly into the microphone, state your name for the record.
Nick DeMayo, DeMayo Design Group and the architect on the project. Hello, everybody. Nice to see you all. So I'll give you a very brief background on the site and then get into what we're proposing. So 17 Searls Road lies in zone R-1. It's on the corner intersection of Indian Trail and Searls Road. The property is partially in flood zone AE and flood zone X. The BFE for flood zone AE here is elevation 13.0. The house was renovated and expanded in 2002, but the footprint of what is now, I'm calling the garage wing, which is what's in question here today, which is this portion of the house. So the portion of the garage wing was not updated and it is not flood compliant. Due largely to the front setback imposed by Indian Trail and Searls Road, the garage wing is almost entirely outside the building setback. This area of the home is part of the original structure dating back to the initial development of the property, which predates current zoning regulations. The slabs of the garage, so this wing here, this wing in question is, these are the existing plans and elevations. So when I say the garage wing, I'm basically referring to this portion here. So the garage slab elevation is at 7.69, which is well below the BFE. In this wing, they have a small mudroom, which has some buildings and a mud sink. And then they have a mechanical room. This is only four and a half inches up from the garage lab, so it's still well below the base floor elevation. Then you would enter, this is this side entry right here. You would kind of go up to the main floor of the house, which is pretty much at the BFE, and then up another flight to get you to the room, the second floor room over the garage wing. So essentially, that space, which is the second floor of the garage wing that's in question, is sort of like a rec room, bathroom, there's a laundry room, an office. It's a good amount of space, but the ceilings are extremely low. The wall, the exterior wall plate is at six foot seven, and the ceiling slopes up to seven foot two at the highest point. Very poorly insulated. It's not a great space to be in. They sort of just use it as a place to store stuff. So the intention was to sort of rework this space, gain more ceiling height and sort of bring everything up to code. So really quick, the project kind of consists of two phases. So the first phase, which is why we're here tonight, is the renovation of the second floor. And what they would also like to do is the garages right now face Searls Road. Again, quickly on the site plan, so the garages are currently here. Along with this project, phase one of this project, they're proposing, we're proposing to put the garage doors on the side here. So so along with the renovation of the second floor, that is the second ask of this proposal, which is to take those two garage doors and put them on the side.
Why, Nick?
Ultimately, what they want to do, so a couple of reasons for it. So I have I have some screen grabs that I took, in case you guys didn't make it out.
I think we have these.
Okay, yeah, 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 this is.
Oh, okay, we don't have these.
Yeah, so basically, there's a really big problem with the way Indian Trail comes on to Searls Road. They have two curb cuts right now with their driveway, and this curb cut is it's almost indistinguishable from Indian Trail. It looks like the same road. And there's been some safety concerns about that. This is also a very hard turn here, so it really is a blind is a huge blind spot, really kind of coming from both ways. So the idea was to, I'll bring you to the proposed site plan. So the idea was to update the structure as phase one and then implement these site changes as phase two. So what we would do is eliminate, eliminate this circular driveway, so eliminate the curb cut here, eliminate the curb cut here, and have one curb cut that goes straight in, and then you turn into the garages this way. So there's sort of a proposed motor court here, there's a low stone retaining wall, or not a retaining wall, just really a perimeter wall along the property, and sort of all new landscaping. So I uploaded this recently to the application, but it was only two days ago, so in case you weren't able to see it, the homeowners and I reached out to the Tokenique Board, and the president, Michael Cosolo, wrote an email back saying that the board wishes you well with the project. "We do not object to the project, since you are sticking within the existing footprint and reducing the number of curb cuts, the latter of which we view as an improvement to the neighborhood from a safety perspective." So that kind of goes hand in hand with phase one. So, like I said, phase one is renovate the existing, phase two is the site work.
If you don't mind, the ZBI doesn't need to approve driveway changes.
Right, right, right. I was just giving context as to why we're turning the garages, because that is part of the.
Planning and zoning commission would have to look at some of the regrading and work with an hundred feet of the short line.
But there is a safety issue here that you're trying to make us aware of the curb cut.
Right, exactly.
Are there any setback issues with the driveway on the south side?
No, there's no setback issues with the driveway.
So that's part of the plan, but really what you're here to talk about is expanding the second floor, which is not in the buildable area.
Correct. So essentially, what we're trying to do as phase one is there would be absolutely no change of coverage. Essentially, what we would be doing is taking the roof off, going straight up. So that's going to bring the plate height from six foot seven to eight foot on the dormers. I'll give you a side view. These are the before and after perspective rendering, so this is before, this is after. So this is a side view of everything. So basically, we're bringing the plate of these dormers up to eight feet. And then from peak to peak, the difference from the the old peak to the new peak is five foot seven. So we're sort of proposing what we feel is the minimum adjustment to gain a decent amount of ceiling height in that space and sort of design something that we feel is in better proportion and scale with the rest of the home. This is very squat, and it comes out very far compared to the rest of the home. So a couple hardships to consider here. So the first hardship is the front and side setback, or the two front setbacks, one on Searls Road and one on Indian Trail. Indian Trail is the, has created a longstanding non-conforming location of the home with respect to building setbacks. Indian Trail is currently a gravel road that is only used by a few residents on that street. As I mentioned before, there's a safety concern about the current driveway in relation to Indian Trail and coming out onto Searls Road. The other thing to consider here is that opposite 17 Searls Road, there is no neighboring home. So the the other side of Indian Trail is just native vegetation and there's a little tidal pool over there, so there's not a neighbor in question on that side that we are, that's in question here. So hardship, the second hardship to consider is the AE flood zone. So part of our intention in doing this project is to redo the mechanical systems for this wing of the home. So right now, it has baseboard heat, and it's pulling off of the existing home, there's an AC duct in there coming off the existing home, but it really is not adequate. So what we would like to do is move the mechanical equipment out of the mechanical room that is currently in the flood zone and bring it up to an attic space above, well, that we will have created now by adding pitch to that roof. So on the plan, so on the plan, our intention on the second floor, so as I mentioned before, no footprint increase, but the idea would be to have, change that rec room to be a vaulted ceiling on the end, and then over all this space here would be the attic, would be the attic space where new mechanical systems would be housed. There would be a pull down stair here, and that gets everything out of the flood zone.
That is, sorry, go on, John.
What's the floor plan of the attic? Just above the bedroom?
Yeah, yeah, the attic, so this would be the vaulted portion, and then there would be a soffit along this wall that feeds this room, and all this area would be a drop ceiling at eight feet. And and that's where the mechanical systems would be.
So this entire thing is outside the buildable area?
This entire thing is pretty much, yeah, the whole wing of that house is outside the buildable area.
I gotta bust your traps a little bit, Nick.
Yeah.
This doesn't seem like a big hardship to me. We see, there's a letter in the file that said that Marianne Castell agreed to support this structure remaining here because she thought it had, even though there's not technically historical significance, she liked it. She liked, it's this old barn, it's kind of cool. But I don't see anything here that's a real hardship, other than it's just matching roof lines, right? It's more cosmetic in nature. You're saying no.
So, well, I get your perspective on that. So I think that.
And it looks great. I love what you designed, but again, we're always tactic, we gotta come up with a really good argument for why you're gonna do this in a completely unbuildable area. And I heard your minimal adjustments, so keep going.
Yeah, yeah, so really, really, it's trying to balance what the clients wanted to do on the second floor with what I was hoping would be something that was an adjustment that would not only improve the the site conditions in the area, but also, I do believe that there is a real flood hazard there, because that that garage is well below the base flood elevation. It floods, it's flooded multiple times, and it's wiped out their mechanical systems more than once. Now, they've only lived there for about five years, but that whole area has, is very prone to flooding. So I do believe that there's a real need to get that mechanical equipment out of there. It's very dated, it's old. There's baseboard heat, so to have an attic space where we can put that mechanical equipment, I believe, is a real plus here to the homeowner. And and then that wing is essentially a garage with unfinished storage. So it really kind of removes them from any flood risk.
Is there any other place to put that equipment?
Well, so I think what it comes down to is, for them anyway, choosing to invest in that wing of the home when it's deteriorating and has an extremely low roof is really questionable. I mean, the other hardship that I think we should consider here is how could we even approach this project without raising the roof, because we would be unable to meet any of the energy codes. So the rafters in that ceiling are two by six. If we were to come down, that would, you'd be below six foot eight in a lot of that space, which is not acceptable from a building code perspective. So you'd have to get a variance from the state to not insulate that up to code. So we're trying to, we're just basically trying to say, okay, hey, let's do this project, let's do it right, let's bring everything up to code, let's get the mechanical equipment out of the flood zone. And so that's sort of how we're approaching it. And I think phase two, although Woody's right, it's not in question here tonight, moving the garage doors to that side is part of this portion of the application. And so I think there is a real safety concern about that corner. There's no barrier with the driveway, kids are always playing in that neighborhood. No one even knows that that's a road, really. That Indian Trail's a road. So I think they probably wouldn't go forward with anything should should we not move forward, or should we get denied with this. So I think that it would sort of remain as is. I don't think it would be worth it to them to move those garages.
Why not? Why not?
It's just what they've told me.
Where else could you move them?
The garage doors?
Equipment? No, not just the garage doors, the entire garage. If you took the entire garage off. No, John, what were you gonna say?
The buildable areas.
What equipment needs to go upstairs?
So, right, so essentially, what they're gonna do is, they're gonna do a heat pump system. So it's going to be, we're gonna eliminate the baseboard and it's gonna be forced hot air and cooling. So there's gonna need to be, there's gonna need to be an air handler outside, something upstairs, an air handler inside, so a condenser outside, air handler inside, and there's gonna need to be a water heater.
So what's there right now is a hot water heater and
Yeah, there's a boiler and a furnace.
So that's the third way. And then where's the AC? The AC is not there?
The AC, so right now, this area, well, in the existing plan, that area gets fed from a duct that's kind of coming through the original house.
So that equipment's stored somewhere else.
That equipment is somewhere else and, you know, it's, there's no really way to get it in deeper because there's no meat to the ceiling. So it kind of is in a soffit where the stairs are where you come up.
It's not finished space now, Nick? The second story?
It is finished.
It's just roughly finished and the ceiling height's low?
Yeah, it is finished, it's totally finished, but it's just really, they say, you know, very cold in the winter, they don't really use it in the winter, it's very hot in the summer. It's just not pleasant space to be in, so you know, it's sort of, there's two rooms that are kind of half storage room, and there's a little spot where the kids have their toys, but that's basically all it's used for. So my clients really like, you know, the stone base on that part of the house. They like the aesthetic of it, like the idea was not to knock it down, the idea was to just take the roof off and try to get a little extra ceiling height, really.
And house the mechanicals, and while we're at it, make the driveway curb cut.
Right, so yeah, exactly. So just kind of trickle, a trickle effect of improvements that would come with this project. For them. That would make it all worth it, so to speak.
And what do you want to say?
We'll have two questions. You mentioned equipment. So there'd be a new HVAC system for this wing?
That's correct, yeah.
So where would this equipment be outside?
So the condenser, I don't think we have one on the site plan, but the condenser would be probably right back here.
We'd need a variance for that. A separate variance.
Yeah, so on the survey, to Woody's point, there's three, what looks like three AC units shown, and one of them is in the buildable area, one of them is completely out, and one of them is like split right down the middle. So I don't know if those are newer, yeah, those three there. So I don't know if those are new and existing. I guess the other question is, is what elevation are those sitting at? Because that looks like it's, what's that survey?
It's below the flood elevation.
They probably have to be put up on a platform.
Yeah, they're on a platform.
If they're in the setback, you'd need a separate variance for that. Any other questions?
Right, I guess, sorry, so I guess the point that I was gonna make there is, look, the design is very nice. I can see why they want to do this project. But you know, moving the mechanicals up above the flood plane or zone, whatever you call it, elevation, but then that stuff back there is still in the flood and I guess is not being moved as part of this? It's, you know, it's tough.
Yeah, I can understand. I mean, I can only, I can only sort of make recommendations and control what I can control. So, you know, certainly could advise them to lift those as well. I suppose that those are far enough back where they've never, they've never had an issue. And they are a couple feet up higher, too.
The, in the file we got on the original variance, there's something about how much they, the barn door, the barn door garage doors was in her, I forget what her name was.
Marianne Castell, she was the town historian at the time.
Part of her letter was that they were keeping those doors there, and now this is moving it, right? So that's another.
We do want to reuse the doors, by the way. The intent is to just take those doors and put them on the side.
Yeah.
But they look like, they look like they're new doors to me.
Well, they were replaced, I think, as part of that. The letter says that they can replace them kind or something like that.
Yeah, because they look pretty updated, those doors. But the intent is to re, they are in good shape, so the intent was to reuse them and put them on the side.
Jenna, what are you thinking?
I have a question about square footage. So what is the square footage of the space that's currently there?
On the second floor?
Yeah.
I don't know if I have that on hand.
You can give me a ballpark.
Yeah, so I would say I'd say it's about 800 square feet, so it's about, it's basically 20 by 40. So it's, it's a substantial amount of space up there.
And with the mudroom and mechanical, would it also be considered finished space on the first floor?
So the mechanical wouldn't, it's completely unfinished, but that mudroom is, it is cosmetically finished. It has like a tile floor, it has some shiplap on the wall, so it doesn't have drywall, partially because I think it floods. And then there are some, you know, sort of basic cabinetry along that side wall.
So as part of this, you're saying the first floor is going to stay the same, it's just going to be lifted?
No, the first floor is going to stay the same unchanged. The only thing we're doing is taking the mechanical equipment out of that mechanical room, bringing it up to a new attic that we would be creating. So really, the only change we're proposing is the roof height on the second floor. We're proposing to take the roof off and raise the plate by about a foot and a half and change, you know, and you know, just basically lift the whole thing up, change the pitch of the roof, make it match the existing house and raise, you know, raise that structure.
Nick, that thing's still gonna be wet.
I'm confused. Yeah, I thought that part of the hardship was that there's flooding. And so I thought that you were going to be raising some things so that you're getting higher up. Are you saying it's not that, it's just the roof is getting raised?
Yeah, because the only hazard on that floor is the mechanical equipment. Everything else is, you know, it's just the garage, it's mechanical, which is unfinished, and it's that mudroom, which is, you know, pretty floodproof. So that wing will remain the same. I mean, we can't lift it because it's where the garage is. So we have to keep the garages on grade, so it's really just, like I said, a volumetric, you know, increase on the second floor with the roof.
Okay, so you said that the second floor is about 800 square feet. What would the new square footage be?
It would be exactly the same. Yeah, it would be exactly the same footprint.
It's just the space.
Correct.
It's the volume in the set.
Yes.
Yeah.
What's the existing square footage of the house?
The house?
The entire, the entire, not just in question.
Yeah, it's about 6,000 square feet.
And that's five bedrooms?
Yeah.
And so they want to add a sixth?
They, I guess they're saying it's a office guest room. So I guess it's mostly gonna be an office, but it could be a bedroom?
What's the accessory structure that's on the north side of the property? Northeast? Kind of in that V section? That's not a separate residence, is it?
Oh.
It's not on the map, it's like in that white space.
Oh, I'm not sure. No, it's not a separate residence. It might be a shed or something like that, but it's not, I'm not aware of anything.
Is it in the setback or something we're asking?
It says place it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, this here? Oh, sorry, I thought it was.
No, I was talking about something else, but.
Oh, I thought you were talking about that corner.
I don't know.
Kevin, what are you thinking?
Are you doing deliberation?
No, I'm just, do you have any questions?
Between Jenna and John, like questions?
Any questions, great answer?
Yeah. Any letters of support from I-19 Searls, or the southern neighbor?
Oh, sorry, what?
Do you have your clients receiving support from your neighbor that's directly self?
Don't know, we haven't, I haven't heard from anybody. As far as I know, we just heard from the board, the Tokenique Board, yeah.
I drove by and it really doesn't seem like anyone anywhere near them is affected by it, because it's facing basically wetlands, so.
And it's a half acre, like a lot, in R1 zoning, and with subject to 65 foot setbacks from the roads, that's a corner lot, is all right?
Yeah, yeah, that is correct. So across the street is basically is, you know, tidal pool, and then directly adjacent, so what would be their neighbor on the other side of Indian Trail is also just native vegetation and tidal pools. So they're surrounded by, kind of surrounded by wetlands there, big time. But yeah, there's no, there's no neighbors across or to the side.
Nick, was there any thought to just going up on the existing walls that are there? The existing shed dormer walls, because you're kind of bumping out to be in line with the exterior wall, right, on the first floor? I can show you what I'm having.
Yeah, yes.
So right now, you're setback from the exterior wall on the first floor, right?
Right.
And then it goes up, I don't know what that dimension is, a foot or whatever.
Right.
And now you're coming straight up.
Straight up, yeah.
So the footprint is changing a little bit, but was there any thought to just going?
So this exterior wall now actually does align with that. This roof overhang is like made to kind of, I think, trick the eye into perceiving that as a dormer?
So this line of wall is the same all the way up right now?
Yeah, that's correct. So this line right here is that skirt roof that sort of goes around there?
Does that stay?
No, that's gone. That's gone. So we just follow the wall straight up?
Okay.
You're talking about this right here, right?
I was talking more about down here. I guess I see.
This kind of goes, yeah, yeah, exactly. So that's in line, so we just kept that line and eliminated that skirt.
So that's the neighbor you're asking about? So what was this, Nick? Was this lot was subdivided years ago? It's a funky lot.
It's a very strange lot, yeah, it is. And yeah, I mean, it is, it's a substantial house. I mean, I think to me, anyway, that that, the piece that's in question, the garage wing that comes out, to me, it's very weird. The scale is like completely different from the rest of the house. I mean, I drove by that house for years and always thought that's weird. It just never looked right to me.
Why didn't they do this as part of the first phase back into, you don't know, they're not your client.
Yeah, I honestly don't know, and, you know, I do like the aesthetics of what, of the wing, but it just, with the house behind it, it's like they put this monster behind it and they left this for whatever reason, maybe historic, the historic nature of it or whatever, but yeah, it's just very limiting and it feels like a complete and utter waste of space up there. And, yeah, I just, yeah.
I thought I read somewhere in here that they wanted to keep it.
Yeah, there was some historical.
It's like a gas station.
Yeah, it used to be a, I think it used to be a gas station.
No, no, the owner. I could have sworn.
Yeah, no, I read that.
That they wanted to keep it.
Yeah, even though it was on the.
They didn't have a nice rendering like Nick did to see what it was gonna look like.
Yeah. Any other questions? Woody, did you have questions?
Well, I thought, I don't know if you can do it, but can you show the existing and proposed elevations together?
Oh, yeah.
You've got fairly substantial additions on the driveway side projected out of the second floor. Gable farm. Gable forms.
So, so this is the, the front, uh, existing and proposed?
So you're changing that roof.
So, so, so this roof line, we were talking about this roof line here, which is kind of a skirt around the building, so it almost gives an illusion of this being, being a dormer when it really is not. It's in line with the outer wall. You can see a little bit better on the side elevations. So these are the existing sides, these are the proposed sides. So, so, so this skirt kind of makes this look like it's tucked in there, but it's really not, so we're eliminating that skirt. And we just follow, you know, we're just aligning with the, the lower wall. So, I mean, if anything, we lose, we lose a little bit there, but the roof overhangs are...
Which, which one of those lower, which one's the Indian Trail facade?
This is the Indian Trail facade.
So you're adding those...
This is the door that's on.
So you're adding those dormer forms and a cupola on top of a five, six-foot raised roof?
Right. Well, one of the idea, one of the reasons behind these dormers was to try to keep this overall roof down, because if you notice, like, the plate of these dormers is at eight feet. So, uh, so, so, so this side wall is, is kind of where it is now. It's, it's at, it's at six and a half feet. So the idea was to, you know, sort of, again, take as little as I could, keep everything as low as possible, but still, you know, try to get them what they wanted out of this and, and make it worth it for them. So that's why, that's why these dormers are, are like that, because we needed, we needed some way to get the, get the space back on the interior. So, so that was the, kind of, the idea behind that.
But the resulting change is major difference, five feet from the Indian Trail property line at the closest point.
But, keep in mind that there is no neighbor on that side.
But it's the streetscape.
Yeah, the streetscape, but...
Streetscape is important.
Yeah.
That's why we have setbacks.
Yeah.
Can you show us the existing, um, elevation for, oh, that's it right there?
Oh, yeah, they're up above, yeah. So, so, so existing, existing and proposed.
Okay. So it, it, it goes from the far left, top left corner to the bottom?
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, so, so this, this part here, this whole column, that's the area in question.
Okay.
And thi, this is just remaining.
So really, the only volume that's increasing in the space is in the height?
Exactly.
And you're offsetting it by moving the equipment for safety reasons upstairs? Right now, it's down where it floods regularly. You're not going to come back to us and want to raise this whole thing in a few years, are you?
No, I really, I would, I would be hard pressed to do something like that, I think. But I, I mean, too, they, you know, they do, they do use the garages. They're very tight, but, um, you know, you, you can pull a small, small car into them.
Did they look at ripping off this addition and, or this extension and putting it somewhere else on the property? I don't think you can.
Yeah, we never, we never got into that just because we thought that, you know, if we were to rip this off, there's really nowhere else to put it. Um, and if we wanted to just, I think there's a stronger case to work with this existing than to, you know, propose a rebuild of this wing. I don't think there's really any validity in that because we, I mean, we could, the garage would, I mean, we can make everything flood compliant doing something like that, but to me, if the mechanical equipment are, is now out of that space, who really cares if that floods? It's, it's just store, unfinished storage and a garage and a mudroom that's just like kind of floodproof.
One thing to think about, I mean, depending on how the board votes, is that garage wing, which is entirely in the setback now?
Mm-hmm.
If you were to take that out and move it to just south of where the front door is or would be, you could squeeze in a garage in the buildable area or...
Here, basically?
Yeah, or, or even go outside of the buildable area by a not insignificant amount to get that garage in, and you still would be reducing the nonconformance significantly. Right, so one thing to contemplate is, you know, you wouldn't even necessarily have to be just in the buildable area, because if you came here and said, right now, that whole thing is in the setback.
Yeah.
Give me a little bit of space on the setback, I'm reducing the nonconformance by seventy-five percent.
Right.
I think that would be looked upon positively, is one thing to consider.
And you get rid of that curb cut over by Indian Trail?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's a very interesting point. I, yeah, I, I don't know if they'll want to go there. I mean, it changes the whole front of the house.
And we may approve.
Yeah, 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 no, but I, I completely understand where you're coming from with that. It's definitely not a bad idea, something to propose to that.
Nick, you do nice work, I do like what you did.
Let me say this, it, if I lived in the neighborhood, which I used to, I would much prefer to see that in the neighborhood than what's currently there.
Well, I do appreciate it, yeah. I, I, you know, I, I know this one is, is more of a stretch than what I normally propose to you guys, but, um, you know, trying to do my best to, to juggle, you know, their expectations and what they can get with, you know, we, we, we scaled this way back, trust me. I, when, when they, they had some, some grand plans for this and...
This is the scaled back version?
This is the significantly scaled back version. So, yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Nick. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on this application? You're here for something else? You don't want to jump up and talk about this for fun?
No.
You're good? Okay, anybody else? All right, we will close this hearing, thank you, Nick. If you want to stick around, we're going to deliberate tonight.
Okay.
Okay. All right, up next. Calendar number sixteen, dash twenty twenty-four, the application, am I looking at this right? Yes. The application of Mary Lage.
Yes.
Is this right, Mary? Hold on a second. On behalf of Karen Vega and Stephen Lanza, to submit it on January eighteenth to allow the construction of a second story addition at one seventy Hollow Tree Ridge Road. All right, please state your name if you could clearly for the record.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mariana Lage and I am the home wars agent in this case. I have, um, a couple of, um, pages that I wanted to pass out, pass along. This is, um, five. I did miscalculate this.
Mary, are you an architect?
Um, no, I work on the, with the bureaucracy of the, of the business. So I just deal with the building permits and variances and all that.
Oh, you're so lucky.
Yeah, because I don't have to design anything, but I just have to understand what they designed, so. Um, I'm going to pass this, which is also a recommendation from your staff. They recommended that we show you proposed versus, um, existing, and this is what we did.
So we have not seen any of this? This is new?
Yes, you did. On the, because we submitted, um, I think, um, three set of plans.
Yes.
Where we didn't pose them like once, one versus the other. And that shows clearly what it looks like now and what it will look like if we are granted the variance. It also brought copies of the survey, I'm not sure, I'll need them. So, um, different than my friend over there, my presentation will be short. I was over there like listening and thinking, oh my God, I'm going to be fast, like what I'm going to say. So, this is, uh, pre-existing nonconformity. The house already sits at five, uh, five feet, eight inches on the, into the setback, so we're two point two, um, short. And whichever, um, change or renovation that they intend to do to this house, they would need to come before you, so that's what I'm doing here today. They are, um, they plan to build if we are granted the variance, a second floor. Right now, there's only an attic. And also on the survey, on the zoning table, it says that, um, maximum numbers of stories allowed, it says two and a half, and then on the existing condition, conditions, it says two and a half, but this should be corrected as is one and a half right now. So, we could go up to two and a half, which is, we're trying to go to two, but I'll have to get my surveyor to correct this, because I was reading and I was like, this is not right.
Okay.
Um, so one of our hardships is that we are, we have a pre-existing nonconformity. Whenever this house was built, the zoning regulations were different and they built it, I mean, when I look at the survey, I could see if they had like slightly slighted the house a little bit towards the right side, the house would still be within the setback and we wouldn't need a variance today, and I really cannot understand why this is the way it is, but... And then another hardship is that our lot is the smallest lot in the area, we are an undersized lot. We were supposed to have eight thousand seven hundred and twelve square feet and we have seven thousand one hundred and forty-two. Um, I don't know how that adds up to our case, but just want to bring that up, that we are also short by fifteen hundred square feet. I'm not sure if we had that, we would be, um, outside of the setback area. But, um, right now, the, I know this is also not, not a hardship, but the homeowners, um, one of the homeowners is pregnant and she's going to have kids, so she's looking into what can she do with the house to better use the space that she has, which is very little. And right now, they have, they have three bathroom, bedrooms and one bathroom, and they're looking to do one bathroom downstairs, which one of them, they're going to remove one wall and it's going to be living space. And they're keeping one bathroom downstairs, and upstairs, the plan is to construct three bedrooms and two bathrooms. So they, all of this will fit within this, the, the footprint of the house, nothing is going to be added at, um, to extend the footprint of the house. Actually, the option to do the second floor is the best for them because they don't have to do new foundations or have that expense. And we are going to have five hundred and seven, five hundred and seventy square foot, um, square feet addition. Right now, on the second floor, which is not a second floor, it's just the attic, and there is a bedroom right there, it's about three hundred and eighty square feet, and we're looking to just bring it to match the first floor, which is nine hundred and fifty. So, first floor will have nine, nine hundred and fifty, and second floor will have nine hundred and fifty. And in addition to the addition on the second floor, we are also, um, following one of the staff advices, which is to enlarge in the driveway. And I think we, um, I uploaded the, or submitted the survey, which says proposed driveway extension, and this is going to be about twenty feet wide, which is also one of the staff recommendation, um, to make it safer to park the car so nobody parks on the street. This is going to be, um, a good improvement to the neighborhood. Um, let me see if I covered everything. Yeah, we're going to still keep, um, the maximum height, which is the midpoint, we're still going to be under what is permitted, so we're not asking a variance for that. We're still not going to ask a various, variance for coverage, because we can still, um, go up a little more without invading the coverage. So it's only for the two point two feet on the left side setback.
So, we're going to give you a math quiz now. So two point two feet is in the setback, it extends over.
Yeah.
Then you're going up, right?
Yeah.
So how much additional space will be in that setback area? It's two point two times something. What's that volume?
Oh, okay, I did not have that. Let me do this. Because this is, um, the, you want to know, just inside the red line, right?
We, we try and get a handle for the record on what, it's this portion. So whatever's outside the setback, that is what's increasing, right? Because you're adding a second story there.
Yes.
Okay, so it's roughly two point two feet by, what is that? Thirty?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Thirty.
Is it thirty?
That's twenty, I would say it's closer to thirty.
Okay. Okay, is that close? Do we feel comfortable that we know it's about two and a half feet by thirty? And then is the patio remaining, or are you cutting that patio back?
Um, we did not have plans to cut the patio, but if this is one of the conditions for this to be approved, we would happily...
You would do that?
Yes.
What do you, do we care?
Because it's...
May I ask a question?
Yes.
How many, how many feet is that? It's how many by how many feet right now, the patio?
The patio, oh, I'll have to see.
I think there's a dimension on here, let me see what he said, it says...
Is there a dimension? If not, I would have to see if this is included on the floor plans, which I don't have. Hmm.
Can't tell, is it twenty or... Pretty large?
They should have this on the survey. I would have to get that number, because I'm unsure, apologies.
What is it, Mari? Is it raised? Is it flagstone? What is the patio?
It's stone.
Stone. Okay.
Does that count? And I guess because it's been...
Well, that's what I was wondering, it's still...
It's not above a foot.
Not, not in coverage, no.
No, okay.
Does stone count? I thought stone didn't count for setbacks either.
What do you mean by stone? Like bluestone?
Yeah, yes, bluestone.
Like just in the ground?
Yeah.
Let's consider it terrace, we have an activity space separation of eight feet to try to reduce the impact on neighbors a little bit.
Okay. Is the total coverage less than twenty percent?
Yes, yes, it's five hundred and seventy.
I don't know what that means, five hundred and seventy?
Square feet.
Square feet out of what it's supposed to be, what? Anyways, the total coverage is under twenty percent. Okay. Okay, I'll go around, uh, can, you want to start with any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, be quiet.
What's going on on the third floor?
Oh, there's no third floor.
I'm sorry, the attic, the new, there's a new attic space, right?
You're going from one and a half to two and a half, so there'll be some kind of unfinished space, or is it vaulted?
It's vaulted, yes. We, we only have three bedrooms and two bathrooms upstairs.
Okay.
That's all we have, we don't, we don't have...
Where are the mechanicals going? Are they going to put in central air or...
I'm, I think they're going to keep what they have now and just like do the second floor. They don't have a plan to move the mechanical, they didn't mention anything about that. Like renovating the mechanical.
Yeah, where are they? Are they in an attic now? Yeah, okay.
So, I, I don't know, there's, there was something on our drive or whatever, our website. There does look like there's a third floor here. Unless I'm not, I don't know what these are, they're not, these drawings aren't labeled here.
Is there a walk, is there a walk upstairs?
Yeah, there's a stair.
There is, uh, there is an attic. It's just a bedroom upstairs.
No, but that's got to be, that's got to be existing, right? Floor one existing, floor two.
Yeah.
Now...
I just have the bigger versions of the same thing.
Are you, are you talking about this? This plan? With the walk, this?
That's got to be existing, right?
Right, so this is the first floor and this is the second floor that exists now.
I also have that on the page.
It's an attic, but it's a bedroom, right? Is this what we're looking at?
Yes.
So right now, the mechanicals are somewhere up here, I assume.
So I have to check if they're going to move it up to the vault, because they're going to have vaulted ceilings.
Okay. So there will not be unfinished space above that second floor?
Yeah.
There won't be.
Is there a lower level?
No.
Is there anything else in the setback you guys that we're worried about? Mechanicals?
That's what I was going to say, where are the mechanicals at?
It's on the other side of the house right now. It's, it's now, it's in, it's in the right area, but. Mari, did you talk to any neighbors about this?
No, I haven't heard from anybody. I didn't mail everybody, but nobody has opposed or wanted to come forward in.
It's an interesting location. I mean, it's, it's right at the corner, not at the corner, but it's very close to the intersection between um, it's a hollow tree and
West.
and west.
Mm-hmm.
And there's some development going on. I had, eh, because it's such a busy intersection, it was hard for me to spend very much time there. Um, but there's a big development going on, eh, on one side or the other of it.
South side, yeah.
The south side. Is that a home, or is that?
You mean the whole new Noroten Heights development there, you mean?
It was hard, no, there's some other construction project going on very close to this.
On one houses?
I couldn't tell if it was a house or if it, it was a large structure, but it was so quick that I didn't have a chance to kinda figure out. This, it's an unusual, it's a, it's a very small house and it's got a lot of other things going on around it. Um. It's an interesting location.
I think that might be part of why they recommended enlarging the driveway, cuz it's a busy, it's a busy road.
Busy intersection.
So yeah, they're taking that under consideration as well.
What do you do with the question?
It's a challenging patient.
And she did work with staff? They worked with staff to come up with?
Maybe I should, um, maybe you wanna state what's gonna be preserved of the existing structure?
Yeah.
From the foundation up, what's, what's gonna be kept?
Um, the first floor is going to be kept, the whole foundation, we're not changing anything with the, within the foundation. We're gonna remove the roof. We're gonna keep um, ceiling, um, not ceiling joists, the, the ground joists, trying to, we're gonna try to preserve as much as we can from the existing foundation and just build upwards. Removing this.
Does that mean the first floor's deck structure would be kept?
Yes.
The first floor walls?
Yes, oh, only one wall will be removed. From one of the bedrooms downstairs, we're gonna keep the one with, um, with the closet and then the other bedroom downstairs will be, um, one of the walls will come up, come out, and then we're gonna have more living space.
Do you know which wall would be removed?
Um, it should show on the plans. I should have kept one copy.
There's no, there's no house.
Would you have one?
They were, they were knocked, one of these was knocked down recently.
The other ones been gone for a while.
No.
I drive by this every single day.
I've been, I've been here before, but I, I was coming in from a different direction than I normally.
Is that right, or is that, that's the packet of existing?
This is the plan, the first floor, this is the bedroom we're keeping, and this is the family room. Um, I think the other bedroom was here, I would have to see the
So what are you saying?
The existing.
So the existing is? I do, I think if I'm right, this is.
I should have a copy too. Yes, so this.
So show Woody what's staying and what walls, you were the one asking about the wall that's coming out?
I was like the one in the corner, they leave the job.
So right now, we have two bedrooms and.
Where's the private, is it right here?
Yeah, no, actually. Yeah, this is the front.
Yeah. So is this exterior wall?
So that explains, so there was a gap and then I saw.
This one's.
So interior walls, you know, usually care about too much, but we wanna make sure it's an honest addition to the existing structure.
Oh, no, the, the same, we will keep the same footprint. We're not gonna go, we're not gonna extend anything, we're gonna keep the same, um, window locations, we're just going to replace the windows to new windows, but we're gonna keep the same locations, same size, everything will stay the same.
So how about this, do you know if the first floor's ceiling joist structure is gonna stay or be replaced?
We are not sure of that, that will depend if the, our contractor, will we be able to keep it, cuz our recommendation is to keep as much as we can of the primary structure, but we are not a hundred percent sure of that.
And Mari, I can't tell what you're doing with the driveway. You said you're expanding the driveway?
Yeah, I have, um, I don't know if you have the.
So I'm looking at this picture, this driveway.
Is the driveway?
Oh, there it is, I'm sorry, you're right.
You see it?
Okay, proposed driveway extension.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I do, it cuts into the front yard, it's coming to those, yeah.
Yeah.
So that way you can hold your.
That was one of the recommendations we're.
It's a no problem, okay. All right. Any questions?
Any, um, probes or anything done to look at the existing foundation there that you're gonna add the second story on?
Yeah, we have our, um, contractor, they're going to inspect and make sure it's, it will support it.
So not yet, but before?
But before we do anything, cuz our main goal is to keep the same footprint, same foundation and preserve what's there now and just build upwards. But respecting the, the whole shape of the house.
Okay. Any other questions? Matt?
Nope.
Woody?
Okay.
Anybody in the audience? Nick, you wanna comment on this application?
Maybe to help me out.
You need any help, Mari?
This seems a lot more experienced than I am.
I think you're doing great.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for us? That's it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna deliberate tonight, so we will close this application and move on to to deliberation. Let's see. All right, we wanna go in order, we'll start with Nick's application. Searl's Road. Who wants to start? I had to, I love Nick's design, I love it.
I can see why the homeowner wants to.
I totally get it. It is not at all what we're supposed to be approving. I just, I especially with Kevin, what I was trying to play, I love what you said, I mean, you can rip that garage off and put it in a more conforming space, still deal with the curb cut and the safety issue.
Yeah, it's easier said than done, but yeah, it seems like it's a good.
It's an option.
Elegant solution. But I, I mean, I agree with you, I, I like the look of it. I, I can buy the argument that there's something unique or unusual about this lot and its shape and its, um, configuration to Indian Head Road and the wetlands and other areas around it. But when you have a house that's already about six thousand square feet and already five bedrooms, it, I don't think passes the smell test for us to comply with state law mandate, which is that, that unusual thing about the lot creates an unusual hardship that would deprive them and substantial justice of the use of the property. Um, you can overcome that despite it not meeting that hardship test if we find that there is some substantial safety concern that is being ameliorated by this, including the flooding issue. For me, it's not significant enough to do that, because the flooding issue is just one portion of the mechanicals that, um, are in that flood zone that would be moved and the safety concern, while I think it's worth considering, doesn't seem quite significant enough. Um, although it undoubtedly would look nicer and be safer to have the curb cut, I don't think it's significant enough to overcome the lack of a hardship, that's my sense of it.
Okay. Jana?
Hard time arguing with what Kevin said. I, I think I'm I'm kind of in a similar situation, I think it, you know, the garage isn't being raised, they're not taking it out of the flood zone, so I don't quite understand other than they're getting better use of that space. I, I'm, I'm not sure I, I'm not sure I, 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 I agree aesthetically, it would be much nicer, and I like the proposed design of it a lot. Um, I, I think I'm struggling with this one.
John?
All, all, all of the above, just don't. I actually had a little bit harder time with the, the hardship than, um, than others, but the minimal adjustment, sorry, just, I this, this is not it. It's beautiful, not cuz Nick's still sitting here, but it's just not the minimal adjustment.
Uh, I agree, it's not the minimal adjustment. Um, I'll, I'll play a little Dell's advocate here though, I mean, I, the, there's no buildable area in this lot whatsoever. You have sixty-five foot setbacks from Indian Trail Road, which, I mean, it, it almost seems like it's a driveway rather than a real street, right?
Right.
It's not paved and it's just connected to the houses going around to Searls, so we're not talking like this is a major thoroughfare, it's other people's driveways effectively, so, um, if you look at it offset from Searls, still not conforming, but it, it's a much, the, you know, you're fifty feet off. Um, Searls are from the corner of the residence, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, I think by the letter, it, it probably doesn't make sense, but also, um, I like the proposal, I want them to make it nicer, I want them to renovate it, I want them to raise it up and make it more flood compliant and, um, energy efficient and, uh, and add value. So I, I, I would be supportive of it for those reasons, but I also understand the, um, the, the, the lack of the minimum threshold.
Mm-hmm.
The, okay, so I'm looking, I think at the two thousand survey, I, I don't have a printout of the more recent one, but this buildable area, I think that over on the terrible directions, but I think this is the area where we're talking about, that the garage could move to, right? This is with.
Kevin's saying it right here. Kevin, his point was, if you came and said, I'm gonna get rid of all this volume in the setback, and I'm gonna put some of it in the buildable area over here and only approach a little bit on this line, then that's a better proposal.
It's, it's not for, it's, it's less, I mean, you're still, like, half the garage is still.
It still requires a variance.
You're saying right here.
Yeah, on the other side. He's on the other side of the entryway right there.
Yeah.
Is that really significant, though?
It's a lot significant.
So I, when you mentioned that, I, I, when I was looking at this, it looked like to me that there was a lot of buildable area over here, and maybe that's in wetlands, so maybe that's like.
Yeah, I don't know. And that'd be a weird place maybe to have the garage.
So you're, you're, you're suggesting this, this section right here?
Yeah, exactly, and, and you would be, uh, maybe you could squeeze a garage entirely in the buildable area, maybe not. Um, and even if you exceeded it a little bit, I think it still would be a substantial reduction in the nonconformance, depending on how much you go into that buildable area. I mean, out of the buildable area. But again, I don't know, I mean, that's a separate thing that I was just throwing out there for them to consider.
But I think I would, it would probably change my view of it if there really was not another s- place to put the garage, right? Like, I think if the, if the garage really needs to stay where it is, then I think I would have a different.
Well, I would say this, I, I think it's fair to say that without a variance of any kind, it would be hard to move that garage somewhere else. Because that just, I mean, without, I don't know, I can't measure, but just like the space that's in the buildable area is not quite the width of that current garage, and they said it's already quite small.
Right.
So I, I think I, I would say that, yeah, that's probably gonna be hard to do anyway.
And that does push the garage closer to their southern neighbor too, so.
Yeah, correct, I mean, there's trade-offs here, and I, I was just putting that out there as a comment, but I don't think it still takes away, in my estimation, from the overall point, which is given all those things, given what Matt said about Indian Trail being what it is, um, I still don't see how they are deprived in any way from a reasonable use of their land and their property, because they still have a six thousand square foot home. With five bedrooms and four baths, et cetera.
Had they, had they put in this application as part of the original renovation, would we have approved it?
Probably not. At the time, I remember that application, they were very insistent that we're keeping the old and building new and pretty much just cleaning it up a little bit.
Yeah, now, so now they're coming back and saying, oh, you know what, we agreed then, now we wanna change it, now it's different owners, I guess, and yeah, I understand, yeah.
But Woody's still here.
Somehow. There's a point, there is a point there that, uh, I think I've mentioned it. There's a self-created problem that sometimes comes up, where one owner has done something, new owner comes along and doesn't like what that owner did and wants to change it, and argues that because of this architectural glitch between the styles, we gotta fix it. But that's an owner-created problem, which isn't supposed to be justification for a variance.
Yeah, we hear you. I think we all like what they're proposing, it makes sense, but the problem is, it's just.
On a bigger property, it would be great.
Are we done deliberating this, Matt?
I, I, I still would prefer that they do this project than not do this project, I guess, but.
I agree, but that's not the standard, unfortunately.
But, but that's also kinda why we're here too, though.
All right, do we have a motion for something? Do we have a motion for?
Well, Matt can make a motion to approve. I can make a motion to disapprove.
Go ahead, Matt.
I don't know, well. Why don't you just make a motion to disapprove?
Okay, I move to disapprove the variance.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Anyone else in favor of disapproval?
Reluctantly.
Yeah, I know. Anybody approve? One denied? So four in support of a denial? How do I say it, Woody? Four for denial? Four in favor of the motion to deny, one supports. Sorry, Nick.
Sorry.
We, we love the design.
It looks very nice. I can see why they want it. They'll figure it out.
Okay. All right. Moving on to, better states for the record, correct? Okay, calendar number sixteen dash twenty twenty-four. Karen, Vaca, Steven, Lonza, Mari. I'm gonna say it wrong, Lage.
Lage.
Lage, thanks, Mari. Um, for hundred and sev- one seventy Hollow Tree Ridge. Okay, who wants to start this one? Matt?
Um, yeah, no, I, I, I've driven by this, uh, property a thousand times since I've lived here, um, know well, I don't know the property well, but I know the area well. Um, and, uh, it seems to be a pretty reasonable proposal, the setbacks are not, um, I mean, like, like the, uh, like she said, there's, we've talked about two, the, um, extra setback here and had the house been slightly shifted, um, we wouldn't be talking about this, it's a narrow lot. Um, I'm glad that they're, they're making renovations to this house. Um, I, it, it, first thing that you see when you drive away from the train station there, so I've always wondered, maybe. There, there was a house I was there, two houses down that they raised recently.
Yeah.
Really glad they did that, cuz it would look terrible for a year, so, but they're.
This reminds me of that book with the little house where the city gets built around it.
Yes.
Doesn't it? Remember that book?
Yes, yes.
So it seems like a, a modest addition as well, like, they, she did say that they did not go up fully with the height. Um, a little concerned about the northern neighbor, I mean, it's pretty close, but, um.
I agree, I wish they had some neighbor support.
But I'm saying, I mean, it's, it's the garage that's up against the side there, so it's a big left of concerns, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So I, I'd be supportive of this, but if you're curious what was the way our goal says this.
John?
Um, I mean, I, the same thing, I drive by this house twice a day, every single day. Um, and I always say that there's another one too there still, well, there's the two empty lots now, but there's another one there too, but, um, I, I always, these side yard setbacks on the little, on the little lots, I always kinda look at, all right, yes, they're adding an entire second story, which is six hundred or something square feet. It looks big, but of that big volume that you see, almost all of it is as of right. We're talking about a two foot by thirty foot sliver that is over. You step that in, then you step the other side in, it doesn't look right. Um, so I, I do, you know, I would agree that something like this is the minimal adjustment. I think they've got a coverage issue for a hardship, eight, seven thousand versus eight thou- or not a coverage, excuse me, uh, lot size. Eight thousand versus seven thousand.
A hardship and unusual, uh, nonconforming.
Yeah, and then also I think their widths are off, um, I, you know.
You don't see a case for stepping this in?
No, cuz it's a, in this one, it's a small, it's a skinnier house, right? So what is it? It's, uh, I don't know where, I had that, I had that earlier. It's only, it's twenty-five feet, so by the time you step it in on each side, it's three feet, so it brings it down to you know, nineteen feet, eighteen, nineteen feet by the time everything is said and done, I don't. It's just.
I don't see how you make it usable without, yeah.
Yeah, it's such a minimal ask for this, in relation to the setback, that I think it's gonna look great, it's gonna help this street look better, and it's not five thousand square feet, right? We're talking about a very modest sized house, if it's nine hundred square feet, it's gonna be another nine hundred, I, I don't know. So it's like eighteen hundred square feet.
I think they're, she said that they were adding basically an under six hundred square feet.
Yeah, so, so it might even be less than eighteen hundred.
Yeah.
It's very, it's very modest.
It's nine fifty, and you're so nineteen hundred, and right now, there's three hundred eighty feet on the second floor. So they're adding an extra five hundred seventy feet.
Anybody have an issue with the patio? Jan, I'm sorry, you go first.
No, I, I actually, I think I'm okay with the patio, if it's just stone on the ground, that seems fine, and I like the the suggestion that they took from the staff about the driveway. I think that they, they need more parking off the street for that location, so I think that's a
That would be, that would be good to stipulate.
That would be, that would be a good thing for that, that location.
It would be good to stipulate that they need to do that, actually.
And also, there's no mechanical on here, so maybe if they just have to show that, or some, I guess.
If you look on the survey, it looks like it's there.
I couldn't tell either. Is it, it's there, right?
Oh, actually, I'm sorry, they marked it up on the survey.
Here.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So if they added a second.
Just say it has to be within the buildable, has to be within the buildable area.
Well, they can't, cuz they don't have the variance to do it, right?
Well, if it's in the buildable area.
They could, right, yeah.
Right.
Just as long as.
So that's all, yeah, okay.
You can stipulate that the mechanicals have to be in the.
Have a stipulation where the mechanical equipment has to conform.
Yeah.
So then the other thing to maybe stip would be something about what's gonna be preserved. Got a little shaky there, but.
Yeah, it doesn't, it sounds like they planned to do a probe before they bef- they planned to do a probe, but they haven't done one yet, I mean, I'd hate for the whole second floor to come off and then somebody decides to dig a hole and down and see what the foundation looks like and find out that it's, I mean, I'm sure it's not slab on grade, there's gotta be something there.
Stip that basically says they're gonna have to preserve the foundation, the first floor debt, first floor, at least the perimeter walls, if they modify an interior one.
Well, the perimeter walls, it, perimeter walls in this, uh, affected by the setback.
Woody, you were concerned they're taking down a foundation wall, is that what your question was?
Well, what are they gonna keep, right, right? In general, this is a subject, particularly for the older homes where.
Is the wall that's coming down a foundation wall?
No.
I don't think so.
But the concern would be is that nobody looks at what's there and then takes the top off the house and comes back. top off the house and comes back and says, oh, oops, sorry.
We have that happen all the time.
It is the way to address that, to say that, you know, one of the conditions is that the foundation does need to be checked to make sure that it is, so that, because I, I think where you're going with it is if the foundation is not adequate, you would probably have to do a complete tear-down, right? And then at that point, you would move the foundation.
Correct.
It would be within the buildable area.
Exactly. Yeah, we're willing to allow this, that they're working with the existing foundation, if they, if their, the existing foundation shows, I don't know how to say it right, but challenges.
If it needs to be re-poured, then you, if you're putting in a new foundation, then it should be moved to be within the buildable area.
Okay.
Also, I think important here, because it's, it's definitely not clear on the drawings, and maybe the drawings are just not far enough along, is that nothing's going on the third floor, sounds like it's vaulted ceiling, right? That's what we were told, or how do we?
There isn't a third floor, so we say.
Well, yeah.
Go ahead, no, no attic living space.
Okay.
Could say that.
So I'll make a motion.
I mean, we don't have to.
No, no, I like that, I think we want as much detail as possible in the record. So I'll make a motion to approve this with a few stipulations, one is that there's no third floor living space, we're approving the patio as is, as long as it remains an inset stone patio, Woody, is that acceptable to you?
I wouldn't say it's acceptable, but.
What language?
I would say is.
We can just be silent, can't we just be silent on the patio?
It could be.
We'll be silent on the patio. We're also stipulating that they expand the driveway per the plans, and that any mechanical additions must be in the approved space, in the setback.
Not in setback, in the conforming.
I'm sorry.
The buildable area.
In the buildable area, in the conforming area. Yep, did I say it right, is there anything else?
Well, yes, you, we're also stipulating that the foundation remains and that the perimeter walls in the setback remain.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I've made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Kevin? All in, anybody else? All in favor? That's 5-0, I'm really good at this. Mari, nice job, congratulations.
Thank you so much, I'm literally.
Yeah. You should be, Nick's out getting drunk.
I have a bottle of water to give him. Either, either case.
I love it. Okay, so that's it, so we have a few business matters, you're all set.
Thank you.
You got it.
Hey, John, have you been pre-appointed or whatever yet? Is the board of select enacted on?
I spoke to somebody on the phone like months ago.
Oh, months ago, I talked to somebody about you last week, okay.
Oh, really? No, Jim, Jim DeMar called me, I don't know, we were, you sent me an email one day and I said, yeah, I just talked to Jim, and I told him that was fine.
Months ago, yeah.
I don't think it's been cleaned up yet, they talked to me last week.
I guess currently you're not a regular member, is the point? For election of officers, it's you three guys, to shake that out if you want to do that tonight.
Yeah.
Didn't we do this like two months ago?
I thought we did, I thought we were going to move you from a temporary.
We dated for the yearbook.
For some reason, Jeff was very uncomfortable with doing it, so we put it off, I think, for two years at one point.
Yeah, we hadn't, yeah, we hadn't done this.
It wasn't really good.
I want to move you from alternate to permanent.
You should do it every.
You good with that?
Yeah, that's what, that's what he asked me, and I was like, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so how do we have to do this? Do you want me to make a motion to do that?
One of you could make a motion to.
And we don't need some sort of majority of the regular members?
Well, two of you would be enough in this case because we only have four regular members now.
So that works, okay. So I'll make a motion for John to move from an alternate to a permanent position.
Well, it wouldn't be us to do that, that's.
It wouldn't? Oh, okay, so what are we talking about? I think so we have to vote in it?
It's for chair and vice chair.
Okay. Yeah. I'm good with it.
I nominate Barb to the heat chair.
Second.
I don't know if we can vote, I suspect we'll go yes.
So I say.
You've only had a couple of months, you got to keep going.
I got to keep going?
Yeah.
It's going so well.
Kevin made that motion, and I'll say Matt seconded it.
Okay, Matt seconded it, and then all in favor except me, so that was four, and then.
Are you voting now?
I'm not, I just don't think I should abstain in.
I'm an alternate, I don't know if that.
Yeah, you're an alternate, it's okay because we have two regular members approving it. And then is Kevin, do we have to vote him as co-chair? Yeah, I would make a proposal that we have Kevin Fullington as the co-chair.
Well, that's not co-chair, right?
Not co-chair.
Vice.
Vice chair?
I'm Kamala here. And you go down because of your mental. Anyways.
It's already happened.
Getting off track.
All right, Kevin is going to play vice chair.
Well, you're nominated.
Mari made the motion.
I'm nominating Kevin for vice chair.
I'll second that too.
Yay, okay, and then we're going to propose that John move from an alternate position to a.
Yeah, that's handled by others that are beyond our control, but we would benefit from getting another member.
Yes. We are working on that.
Which we're still struggling with, because, you know, June, we had a hard, hard time getting a meeting together.
What's Gary's story, is he a regular member now?
He's an alternate.
He's an alternate, but he claims he would move up and would back up.
Why isn't Jana a regular member?
I don't know how that shakes, but.
We can propose that.
You can certainly ask.
We can.
It's up to the nominating committees of each party and then the board of select to actually appoint that stuff, whether it's an alternate or a regular.
What's the difference?
Little bit of, you got, the regular members are automatically attending meetings unless they can't, and then all this.
It's like, who is?
And there's a little bit of this stuff like the office officers, it's a little different, but other than that, we've treated them the same, and everybody's been totally cooperative, and Chuck DeLuca used to say it was great working with this board because it was just never political in any way, and it was just trying to do the right thing to protect people that need to be protected sometimes, and say, no, when you have to.
Oh, should I be shutting off camera at 79, do I tell them or, or this is still on the record, okay?
There's still another business, it's okay.
2025 meeting schedules, did you guys take a look at that? I thought you did a nice job coordinating with the school calendar, thank you.
Yeah, that's always a challenge.
It looked fine to me. So I'll sign it?
Yeah, somebody can make a motion to approve it.
I'll move to approve it.
I'll second. All in favor, 5 to 0?
If you can sign it.
I will sign it, and then the 20, the approval of the minutes, I had a chance to look at the minutes and sent you a response.
It was late, late today, I finished it finally.
Yeah, no, thank you, so does everybody look at the minutes, I can make a motion?
I wasn't there, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Second, Matt, we've got four, Woody? Kevin's abstaining.
Okay.
And.
Turned out this general discussion stuff, we talked a little bit last time about general practices and policies, but I would like a little bit over the summer to kind of work on a couple of things. Last time I talked about something to notify neighbors of what this really means, if your neighbor gets a variance, chances are you're losing some protective rights, and so many times neighbors don't get that at all, they just think, oh, I'd be terrible, I'd be causing a problem for my neighbor if I even questioned what's, what they're doing, and that's not really good zoning for a good community, so I think it would be good if we had something in the mailings included, you know, something to neighbors, tell them what this is really about.
So what is it now, are the applicants free to write anything they want in the letter, basically?
Well, they have to announce time and place.
Right.
We make them include the legal notice.
Right.
Has the guts of it, and not much else.
So they will, they would get something that looks like that?
Yeah, basically. Many times, many times, I don't even understand.
And item K and the drawings.
I don't get the drawings, that's one thing.
They get all, because I had to do, I did this once on DuBois, I had to, I had to go to a post office, give everybody a package of the item K, the drawings, everything, and send them to all the neighbors.
Yeah, we don't require the drawings, but we do require the item K.
Why don't we require the, I like requiring the drawings, because I think.
Because I think we are in a shaky position, a lot of times we frankly believe things that have been said, and we find out in the office. A neighbor, a neighbor came in today about the Edgehill project, and was very bothered that this garage is going to be so close to her property, and she didn't really understand, and how come they're digging out there now, and how come, how come, how come? And I'm like, well, you'll notify.
In Hill.
You know.
Which one was that?
It was the one, the replacement garage that Bob Maslin represented.
Yep.
On Edgehill Drive.
We're still on the record.
It was a real shaky proposal.
Yeah.
Point is, you know, sometimes neighbors don't perceive what it's all about.
So you're suggesting is there should be like an insert in everything that says in bold letters?
Check this out, please.
Yeah, this is, this is an application for a zoning variance, if approved, it will alter the property rights of the person next to you and contrary, contrary to what zoning would allow and may affect you and your property.
Your protective rights, kind of thing, yeah.
Well, it's kind of poking and bear, like, if you start giving a bunch of information out, they're going to ask more questions, so maybe.
Might be good, though.
It might be good.
So, so you got to kind of think about it. Anyway, maybe over the summer.
We might have more neighbors at these meetings.
Yeah.
We didn't even have homeowners then.
Yeah, how about that, huh? Two people for, that's rare. So anyway, there's a few things with, like I said last time, if an applicant says, you know, the owner approves of this, all that, well, show me, I think one of you asked tonight to have a letter of support from a neighbor, that's positive, do you have proof that they've seen the plans, know what it's about? And we've had attorneys and they'll say different things, like, well, it's the flood zone, we can't do that, may not be true, you get a lot of things that are, you know, not accurate, so it'd be helpful if we're careful, let's put it that way.
Okay.
So anyway, over the summer, maybe we can.
Well, let's work on it this summer, maybe some language.
One more thing, Giovanni's is going to be back.
Ooh.
They're proposing an outdoor patio seating area in front of the building.
This is after we dealt with everything.
After we finally got through what we got through, so they want to rip out all the plants, not in the island, thank gosh, right on the side toward the river, and create this water's edge.
That might be nice.
Anywhere, might be okay.
Not at low tide.